Twenty twenty five. I'll stand for the pledge of allegiance and prayer.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our heads of prayer, Lord, we thank you for this day, for everything that you have done for us and for bringing us together this evening. Lord, we ask you to guide our thoughts, grant us clarity, and help us make decisions that honor you. Let our time in this meeting be productive and filled with respect and grace. We pray these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Gerald, can you follow our call, please?
Wells, here.
Day.
Here.
Harris.
Here.
Houston.
Here.
Scott, here.
Yeah, four of them. Are there any public comments on the agenda? No public comments on the agenda? Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of the August fourteenth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting. These minutes have been tabled. Councilwoman Wells wanted some more information added. Added to the minutes. I did reach out to him to ask him for whatever he wanted by email. I don't know if he had a chance to do that or not. Do you know what you want added?
I know what I want to add, but I'm gonna put up another document that I've been sending out in the morning. But also, what I want to do is add your letter that you sent to the Attorney General for your self-report. I think since that was mentioned in the meeting on the fourteenth, that that should be turned in and entered as part of the records for that meeting. Well, that'd be for the twenty eighth. I'm sorry. That'd be for the twenty eighth. I will have next week.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the August fourteenth, regular meeting?
Second.
Proper motion and second, uh, proper motion by Ms. Harris, second by Ms. Day. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Yes, I oppose.
Okay, next item is the approval of the minutes of the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting.
Well, I think before we approve those minutes, I think that interim mayor Lewis's letter to the Office of Attorney General should be, uh, to the specific Mr. David Smith. I think it should be Jet, Jet is the name of Jet, if I'm not mistaken. I think that should be entered as part of the records for that meeting, being that she introduced that she had self-reported a possible open meeting violation. And I think that should be entered into the records immediately received after that meeting is over. So I think that we should, as a council, should add this to the agendas and have every last one of our names on it, meaning we endorsed what was there. And I stand in opposition to the letter because what was stated in the letter was not true. At no time during that meeting did you say you asked them why they had voted against the audit in the past. That was not stated. But I have a record from the Madison Journal that I'm gonna be submitting for my complaint as regard to the accuracy and the misstatement that was in the letter. And I'm also gonna be asking, are there any criminal proceedings or charges that can be handled when it comes to giving false statements to an Attorney General's office employee, because I think that there is.
Okay, so it sounds like you want a copy of the letter to be, to accompany the minutes?
Yes. And indicate that this letter is not true as to the extent of the conversation that we had during the council meeting. Because like I said, I don't have video proof from the Madison Journal that at no time, as you say, you asked them why they had voted in the past. And that was you stated as your reason for having that stated. And then, thank you, saying one of the things that we've heard about, talked about back and forth is an investigative audit. I want to let everybody know how I feel about investigative audit. We're audited every year. I don't think we need to have another one. And see, my thing, I always talk about being truthful. When you first took the seat, you stated that you was for the audit.
Okay, go ahead and read the rest of the sentence.
I got it for right now. And so we have to be honest in what we're saying. At first, you says you was for it, and then in the letter, you said, I don't think we need to have one. So however, I understand that what for this committee to move forward, there's a lot of distrust, and it's probably going to have to happen. So I spoke with Mr. Scott, I spoke with Ms. Houston, and I spoke with Ms. Day, and they all said the same thing to me. They're not against the audit, they're against the cause. And then you're gonna say that you asked them why they had voted. You said, the bottom said, I simply asked why they had voted against the audit in the past. And they all say it was due to cause. And you never said that in the meeting that you asked them why they voted in the past. Your exact statements were, I asked them, were they against an investigative audit? That was your statement. So this letter to the Attorney General is not truthful. So I actually, we entered this into the minutes for the meeting tonight as part of the August twenty eighth meeting minutes.
So, Councilwoman Wells, I have absolutely no problem having that as a part of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the August twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, regular meeting minutes with the addition of my letter to Mr. Smith? Motion to approve. A properly motion by Ms. Houston, second by Ms. Day. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
Yes, I oppose, because it's, again, it's not truthful and the reason for the discussion took place.
I emailed it off. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is to enter public hearing for the introduction of ordinance to adopt the municipal budget. When I look back over the work and everything, I don't believe that we made the proper ten-day notification for the public hearing. So I spoke with Attorney Karen White, explained the situation to her. I asked her specifically if the ordinance had to be reintroduced. She said, no, we can reset the public hearing. So you guys want to reset it for a special meeting? If we count it, if we put it in the paper next week, we could have a special meeting on the twenty ninth or the thirtieth, I think, whatever that Monday and Tuesday is. Or if you guys wanna hold it to the next meeting, the first meeting in October, then we can do that. I really would rather have a special meeting so that we can go ahead and get this done, but it's up to you all.
So we're table number seven, basically.
We have to reset the public hearing date.
I'm not opposed to a special meeting.
See, I'm opposed to it, and the cynical fact is this. We're constantly doing things and not operating according to the law. And we're constantly coming time to time again with mishaps and missteps. So what we need to start doing as a council is that we need to understand what our responsibility is as a council. I knew we didn't have a ten-day notice on the thing, but no matter what I say when it comes to the law, we ignore it. So what we need to do is not have a special meeting, is wait till the regular meeting and get it done to make sure we have all the kinks worked out, because there's still some discrepancies in this budget. We've given raises, we got advertising for part-time positions, that we got budget financial difficulties, and things are going on, and we're not even being a part of the situation. We find, well, I find out about job advertising by looking at Facebook. And so I just think that even though the mayor has the right to hire and fire employees, I think some things should come for the council. Like the council, I'm thinking about advertising for this position. But being, but it never happens. We're doing things without consulting the council. And then we already saying we in financial distress. So why are we adding a position to the city when we should be trying to find a way to save the money and be fiercely responsible? Then in the budget, we got all kind of numbers everywhere. And I know these numbers not accurate. Because we got the same revenue we're saying we gonna have next year that we had last year. And it's impossible, because we don't have the water funds that we once had. And we got a three million dollar budget and one point six million dollar on budget salaries. That's not good, that's not sound financially.
Okay, so we have already introduced this budget. My understanding is that we cannot change the budget if we go ahead and set a special meeting.
Yes, you can, too.
Just one second. Councilwoman Wells, both you and Ms. Harris were appointed to the Budget Committee. All of this should have been worked out way before now, if you had any issues or whatever.
And I voiced my concerns the entire time, and not just this time, the West Committee. I've been voicing for three years that our spending was not being accounted for. And you sat in that corner the entire time. And also, you get involved in the finances. You aware of the monies, and the monies being going out and coming in, because your names on a lot of purchase orders. So you aware of the finances like we are for three years. You've been there ten to twelve years. And those numbers that are in that budget are not accurate numbers. And I stated myself, Ms. Harris said, this is not right. We don't have an accurate accounting of the amount of money the city has. I said, we set it from day one. And so I said, I'm not gonna vote for a budget when it's already prepared before we got here. Every figure was prepared before we got here. So no, I'm not gonna sign off on it. We asked the people at the department heads to find out what they wanted in their budgets. So those are discussions, you said in the discussions. We want the department heads to be explaining, this what we want. So based on what they wanted, we could have included that in the budget. But then also in this budget, we all have capital outlay. And that's considered a special revenue fund. And a special revenue fund is supposed to have its own budget, on how those funds are gonna be spent. And I've been saying that for three years. And we got a hundred something, I think a hundred something thousand dollars in special revenue funds thrown into the general funds. And that's not how it's supposed to go. Capital outlay is gonna be a separate fund by the budget by itself. And I brought the law to show you that it's there.
That's what they are. I do have the budget.
No, but you have it in the general funds. Yes.
So what we have on the table right now is we need to reset this public hearing.
No, we need to go back and have a special revenue fund budget for the capital outlay, because that's considered a special revenue fund. And the law, Rev. Statute thirty nine thirteen oh five, says, each political subdivision shall prepare a comprehensive budget, present a complete financial plan for each fiscal year for the general fund and each special revenue fund. We can't just put. No, but you have. Again, we're supposed to have, like we have a separate one for a suit. There's gonna be a separate budget for special, for capital outlay, stating what we're gonna spend for capital outlay. And what we've been doing in the past is at the end of the year, we'll come and say, well, special capital outlay, we fix the community center. That's not how it's supposed to go. It's supposed to be budgeted what we're gonna spend capital outlay, I mean, capital outlay funds on. And we don't have that one. So the whole budget is wrong. Because the capital outlays will be separate, and it's supposed to be funded. That's all I'm saying. And the law states that, Rev. Statute thirty nine thirteen oh five, budget preparation, A, C, and two A. A statement for the general fund separately, and each special revenue fund showing the estimated fund balances at the beginning of the year, estimates all receipts and revenues to be received, revenues itemized by sources. So we supposed to have that spelled out for your capital outlay fund.
I just saw. Because you never had information. Bring back to us for the budget. That was supposed to bring back, and who's gonna call. That did not happen.
So there's a couple options here. If the council would like to go with Mr. Wells, certainly we can. Y'all wanna put this off, have another budget meeting, then meeting, meeting, hold on. Just one second. Or if you all want to set a special hearing date for this public hearing for this budget, we can do that.
It's not to go with Mr. Wells, so don't say that. It's to go with what the law requires, Mr. Wilson. I won't let you see it. I said, I think it's just. Some say. I've been doing it. I told you.
You was on the Budget Committee, why did you?
Listen, now you and Harris just said, Ms. Harris just said, you asked for it, we still haven't got it.
But then you said it should be a special budget.
Yes.
In fact, this should have been done when you found out.
Ms. Day, I said the same thing last year when you was on the Budget Committee. And I said, you was supposed to have a special revenue fund for capital outlay. And when I said that, you and Mr. Odom both said, no, we don't have to do that. So I brought. Yes. Because I was sat right beside you over there, and I kept saying, why? I said, how, why, what especially? I said, how, yes, you did. I said, how did capital outlay end up a hundred something thousand dollars? And you said, well, I said, what is capital, I said, I asked y'all, what is capital outlay? And y'all said, well, anything, you wanna do that, prove the city. That was, yes, ma'am, you said that. I wouldn't lie on you. I promise I wouldn't. So I brought this up last year. I brought it up last year.
But you was on the Budget Committee this time, though.
And I mentioned the same thing to Mr. Odom. That's one of the things I said to him. And Ms. Lewis didn't know when I said it. That's why Ms. Harris just said, it's things we asked for that we still haven't got.
Ms. Wilson, you have a copy of the law.
Yes, ma'am. So we are aware of it, but I've been on council three years. You all been on at least eight, so y'all should know more than I know on this thing.
Okay, Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir. I would like to address Councilwoman Day. You asked Mr. Wells, why didn't he address? Why haven't you guys addressed the issues that Mr. Wells have asked in an open meeting for all sorts of things? Checks that's been written to individuals so he can do a proper, his team can do a proper budget. So I don't see, I don't see why would you ask him that question when he's asked for the proper information, bank accounts, balances, et cetera, to give a good assessment of the city's financials? And everybody was present in the meetings. And this was just, he just asked you these things maybe three meetings ago. He asked for all this information, and it was on record. And to this day, if he hadn't gotten it, that's an issue. That's an issue with administration, when you hadn't gotten that information. The mayor should have made sure that this budget team get the information to put a proper budget in place. Because I have a serious issue with this, with the budget. There's deficits all over this budget. And I don't see how in the world you can hire someone with the deficit, especially in salaries. You increase the salary budget for twenty-one thousand dollars. You never took out the interim mayor's position in the budget. And then you have a hundred and seventy thousand plus dollars deficit in that area. How? How can you make up for that? How can you, how can you replace those things? There's no way possible. You can do that talking about hiring, whether it's part or full-time. What you have to do, you have to assess, go back and assess everything you have. We can't keep doing it this way.
Okay, so it looks like we're heading into the public hearing that we're not supposed to be heading. So what I think we need as a council, what you all need to do, make a decision. Do you want to go back to the drawing board, or do you want to set a public hearing date? Those are your options.
First of all, I just wanna deal with how alarming it is, Ms. Day, to ask me why I didn't take something. I understand, but I've only been.
Wait until the meeting to bring this up.
But see, you, it wasn't part of the conversation to know when I did actually bring it up. This is not my first time bringing it up. And you're saying you don't remember it, but I brought it up when you was on the Budget Committee last year, when you all, when you all made that amended the budget last year. And I said, why are we amending that budget with capital outlay with over two hundred something thousand dollars? And you said that it's for the improvement or the betterment? Okay, so, yeah, I said, but my question is, this is my thing, okay? I've only been on this council three years. So you go on the Budget Committee, how many times you go on the Budget Committee, you've been on the council? Several, several times, no, but you brought it up. But you asked me, if you asked me.
Okay, so both of you guys, both of you guys.
So my concern is, so my concern is, I should not be asked why. I just bring it up being a fairly new council member. And you all have been on the council, you, Ms. Houston, Mr. Scott.
Several times to come up here and look at the book and look at anything that you wanted to.
Maybe you forgot, I have a job through the daytime. And we take it off twice to come here to have discussion on the budget. And neither time did we come when we presented with the information that we needed to do what we need to do for the budget. You have been on the council for at least ten years. And if you don't know that it's a special, you let her talk. So if you don't know that it's a special revenue fund is gonna be separate for its capital outlay, then that's a shame.
Councilwoman Wells, all right, okay, here we are, folks. What would you all like to do, okay?
We need to do what the law says, then. The law says we have a special budget for capital outlay. That's a special revenue, that's the law.
Is there a motion?
Could you just say, if we have a budget for capital outlay?
Okay, look at your packet, see what you got. Look at your packet, see what you got.
We have, we talked about special revenue funds stand alone, just like a general fund and waterfront fund. Now, when I was doing the budgets this year, I had some things, some obstacles to overcome. Like, you know, we had to amend the budget that we had just improved, and we didn't do that because of procedural problems. And then we were left with this budget to approve a public hearing and to approve this budget. All of the special revenue funds, like for example, Section eight, that's a special revenue fund. It has its own income, it stands alone. The city doesn't do anything toward keeping it above board. It manages itself, or it pays for itself. That's a special revenue fund. So these are all treated, you know, individually. It's not all just thrown together.
So the question is, should capital outlay have its own budget?
Well, you know, capital outlay for this year came after the budgets, and so therefore, there was no capital outlay to make, you know?
No, but you cannot include that in your budget. So the answer to Ms. Houston's question is, when she asks you, should, did you have a special budget for capital outlay, the answer is what?
At the, at the point of this budget, no, because there was not one. Because there was not gonna be anything planned that would go into a special, special outlay, so capital outlay. So therefore, you don't budget if you don't plan to spend it. However, it did happen. We bought some police cars that the council approved after the budget was already made. So you see, that would have gone into a capital budget account right there. But it didn't, because, you know, it happened after the fact, after the budget.
So is capital, is capital outlay included in the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six?
No, because there isn't one. There is any capital outlay. We're not buying anything.
You don't have funds for capital outlay?
We don't, no, because where you can, anything that goes into capital outlay, maybe equipment, autos, vehicles, those, those are capital outlay items. We did not plan, at least I just set it up, to buy anything like that for the coming year. We don't have it. We can't afford it. So therefore, there is no capital outlay budget as such in the budget that we need to go ahead and approve, and as soon as possible. I've never seen it take so long for any municipality to approve budgets.
Right, because we've been doing it long.
It takes a budget to operate.
Here we are.
Take a budget to operate. Okay.
According to his, man, you only have, you only have sixty thousand dollars.
Mr. Wilson, you have not been recognized, have you?
Well.
You have not been recognized, have you?
Well, Madam Mayor, let me, let me address something, because, Madam Mayor.
I'm going to ask you to be quiet, okay?
Madam Mayor.
I'm going to ask you to be quiet, or you're going to be removed from the council.
Madam Mayor.
Hey, officers, come in and remove him. She want him removed, remove him. She want him removed, remove him out of here.
First of all.
Remove him out of here. She want him removed. She want him removed. Remove him out of here. Get him up and get him up out of here.
He should be recognized. Before, before.
You want him removed, remove.
This is what happens, this is what happens, okay? If he's asking to be recognized, Ms. Lewis, you cannot ignore it and then have him to be removed.
You can't use your gal. I said, I had, I said, Madam Mayor.
He was in. Hey, Wilson, it's time for you to go, man. It's simple as that. If you don't want to, violate somebody's rights, then arrest him. If you don't want to move, violate somebody's rights, then arrest him.
I'm not worried about rights.
Stop, man, stop, 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 stop.
I tell you what, since we don't, we don't, we don't, we didn't adopt the Robert rules of order, how in the world can you put me out of this meeting? Because we didn't, we never adopted the Robert rules of order. So according, according to right, right now?
Amen.
This is illegal. Thank you.
Counsel, we feel at the same point. Would you guys like to set a special hearing date, or would we like to go back to the drawing?
We can do whatever, the quickest we need to do it.
And that's why we in trouble.
We need to do what.
What we need, we need to do what's legal.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah. That's what the alternatives are, to go ahead and improve it through a public hearing that's legal. Or start all over again, and that just seems like a beating call.
If you start all over again, how long's that gonna take?
I don't know.
Long, we need to get it right.
Well, you got to come up here and do it. You was the one elected to do it.
And you was the last one that didn't get it right. You started with a budget of a hundred something thousand dollars. And you didn't get it right. Like, you tried to come to me one day, you weren't supposed to say.
Please, please.
Counsel, make the decision or what you do. Somebody wants to offer a motion.
Offer a motion.
Set a special meeting? Proper motion, is there a second?
Again, you're gonna have to introduce a capital outlay budget. You have to do that by law.
Cindy. What kind of capital outlay budget do you think?
The capital outlay budget, according to state law, it says that your all special revenue funds has to be budgeted. And capital outlays considered a special revenue fund.
We don't have a capital outlay special fund.
Well, how do we end up with a hundred something thousand dollars at the end of the year with capital outlays expenditures?
That's in the general fund, and that's the budget that you're passing. It's within the general fund.
Special revenue funds are supposed to be separate, and capital.
We do, okay. We do not have a special revenue capital outlay fund. We have a capital projects fund.
It says capital outlay in the budget, it don't say capital projects.
But it's capital outlays expenditures within the general fund. And that consists of equipment purchases, and also Gerald has in there payments to pay the lease payments for.
Can you show it in the budget? Because I haven't seen it nowhere in the budget. I haven't seen it nowhere in the budget. I don't give a token.
What do you mean, you don't see it, it's on the line?
It says, it says capital, it says capital outlay.
Is it a line within the budget?
But it doesn't have.
I don't have a copy of the budget.
But it doesn't say anything about purchasing equipment.
By definition, capital outlay is purchasing capital assets, whether it be a construction project or equipment. It's also the way that that budget said, if we also include some debt service payments to pay the fire trucks and the police cars when they come in.
That's what the law requires, but the law, it states that's what you do with capital outlay. But it also states that that should be budgeted in your budget. It says, no, it says, no, it says that you will have a general fund and special revenue. I looked at the bar came here.
Okay, we do not have a capital outlay special revenue fund. To have a capital project outlay special revenue fund, you have to have a specific revenue source. We don't have that.
Okay, we have a proper motion and second to select a new public hearing date. I'm looking at the twenty ninth or the thirtieth.
I got a question. You brought Ms. Thompson in to be the defense mechanism. So Ms. Thompson from Allegheny Williams. You was part of the audit firm, right? That audits our finances, that looks, that helps Mr. Odom with the budget, right, with the books?
I help him with.
She closed herself.
I got you. So why haven't you brought to the council when we was in financial distress to discuss our situation? But why are we just seeing you now? Why weren't you here before we went, had a deficit that was about to go bankrupt?
She has a specific role that she plays for us, Mr. Odom.
Okay, again, you brought it into the.
I brought her in to answer the question about capital.
Right, so I'm gonna ask her a question, so I'm gonna ask her a question about our finance. And, okay, can you stop for a minute, man? You cannot overtalk with your voice, but I'm asking a question.
She already answered.
Your voice.
She's answered you three times.
She has not answered my question I asked her.
Oh, she does not ask you, or it was unavailable to come?
Say what? Say what, say it again?
I was either not asked to come, or it was unavailable to come.
Okay, so, so you don't know if you was asked or not?
Well, I have been asked, uh, before, but I was not available.
Same to your budget meetings?
See, if, if, see, if you stop and let me talk, you can hear what I'm saying. I asked her, why wasn't she brought before the council to talk to us about our financial situation before you all put out on the news and in the community that we was about to go broke, be broke?
I told you that.
So no, I, 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 I do all that her answer.
She's so good, that's not her role.
Yeah, I'm like, uh, only if the mayor asks me to, or Gerald asks me to, do I come to a meeting, and I'm not always available.
So why aren't you coming, now?
She's our.
I was, I was here working, I didn't come here for the meeting, I'm trying to do the closeout for the year end, then I'm back there working.
Which means you have access to all of the city's funds, right?
I don't, you mean, financial records?
Yes.
I mean, I have the general ledger.
Right, and you don't have other, uh, funds to show how much we're spending on different things?
Oh, yeah, we have all that.
I mean, I don't have access to every invoice, no, I have, you know, access to bank statements and, um, um, and what's recorded.
So, so at no time did you discover that we was about to be in a financially, financially stressful situation that should've been brought to the council's attention?
That's not her role, that's not her role.
She says she has access to all bank statements.
She's, that's not her role to bring that to the council, that is the mayor and the clerk's role.
But, but, but we're also paying her the same amount of money we almost paying Mr. O. So why can't she come and talk to us about the finances when she is saying everything else?
September thirtieth for the public hearing, September thirtieth for the public hearing, five thirty. So a new public hearing will be set for September thirtieth at five thirty, it'll go in the paper, it'll be, uh, on our website, online, and, uh, everybody is invited to come to that.
I told you, I do things right, man, y'all don't know what y'all doing, we keep messing up.
Okay, under mayor's report, um, Councilwoman Wells had asked, um, for someone from Magnolia to be here to, um, discuss water issues, water increases, um, obviously Magnolia.
So, now, now, what I'm saying is, well, I'm trying to tell you, that's what we gotta do, okay? See what you got, no, what you, no, we have, you have, you have to go back and say, you gotta add an item to the agenda for the special meeting. We just voted on an item that's not on the agenda, so we gotta come back and vote to add a special meeting to the agenda.
Okay, alright, would you like to make that a little?
No, I didn't ask for it. Mr. Scott asked for it, you asked Mr. Scott, doesn't do it. So you can't vote on a special meeting that's not one of your items on the agenda, so you gotta vote to add that item to the agenda.
I disagree, we set it for the thirtieth.
You can't set it, it's not on the agenda.
So the meeting is set for September the thirtieth?
What, what meeting?
The special meeting.
There's no special meeting on the agenda.
You made your point, I made my point.
Yes, I'm coming.
Under the mayor's report, under the mayor's report, uh, Councilwoman Wells asked for someone from Magnolia to be here to talk about, um, an increase in water bills. Um, I did reach out to them, obviously they couldn't make it short notice, so I invited them to our next meeting. I did double check with them to make sure that they have not increased our water rates, under notice to us, and they have not. So what I would ask Councilwoman Wells, I know that you, I, well, no, I believe that you had some individuals who may have come to you and said that their water bills were higher than normal. Um, I don't think we need to wait until that next meeting to address that, so if you'd like to give me that information, we can go ahead and look into it, if they need to be reread, whatever the case needs to be, but I don't think we need to wait two weeks on that so that we can have that information when Magnolia comes.
So, so we, we have individuals that you all are seeing, just like I'm seeing, that's having concerns about their water bills. So I know you all saying on social media, posting on our pages about high water bills. And, and, and you at the, uh, water plant quite often, so, uh, matter of fact, the paper said you gave an update on the water plant things, and I'm trying to figure out how we doing that, we got no control over it. So, uh, if you can go to the plant to meet those guys at the plant, why can't we, cause Brad's gonna be out there every day? It's not hard to get them to come to a council meeting, people been saying this, not just when I said something, folks been talking about high water bills since you been in the seat.
Okay, so.
So those amazing concerns people have.
And I am saying, you brought it up, if you have individuals for, if any of you have individuals who say that their water bills are high, let's go ahead, look into it now, so when Magnolia comes, we can have that information, we can go ahead and have them reread before.
Okay, so as mayor, no one said something to you about how water is? Okay, so why am I the only one to have to ask someone?
All I said was, you brought it up, so that's all I'm asking.
But you should bring up as the mayor of town, you the, you the town official.
I promise you, I'm not gonna work back and forth.
It's my lord, back and forth.
Alright, so, here we, let me just say, we ask Magnolia to come next time. If anyone, okay, has a high water bill and you feel like something is wrong, you are welcome to call city hall, we will look into it, see what's going on, and when Magnolia comes, we can address them with concrete information instead of, we don't have nothing in our hands, okay? Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Wells. And I'll come back to you this day, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm glad you brought it up, I've had several people to contact me about their water bill. What I wanna do is give you all, this individual, he said, call his name Derrick White. He said to give it to you all, for you all to look into it, there are several older people that has high water bills. Uh, we don't know if it's leaks under the house, I don't know, but what I'm gonna give you the topic is for, is okay?
Well, I've spoken with Mr. White, I spoke with him yesterday, we sent, uh, someone out to re-read his meter today, so we're looking into that situation. I appreciate that, if you have some others, you can share that with us, let's pull this together, let's give it, let's give the information and give it to them, appreciate you.
When he sent it to me through my email, for me to give to you all.
Yes, ma'am, I'll take it.
So I would do.
He told me how much it was, but yeah.
Give it to you. Okay, I went to one of my constituents yesterday, and she was complaining about her water bill, but what had happened, she had a leak, so when Magnolia come, ask them to bring information, because they have a, a program where they have leak forgiveness, that they, you know, you can apply for.
Okay, um, also on yesterday, um, we had a meeting, uh, at the port with, uh, some of the commissioners there, Mr. Hicks from the police jury, um, what we talked about was putting together a master list for the entire parish for roads that are being torn up by all of these eighteen wheeler construction trucks coming through, rain trucks, you know, whatever the case may be. A lot of this is coming, coming in, going to the meta, um, project. So Francis Thompson, his office has asked us to put together a master list, um, we're going to do that with all of the entities, um, and we're gonna turn that list in, we've set us, uh, a deadline for this Monday to have the list done, um, and turned in, so.
It's not long now, them trucks come through, they're pretty regular.
Right, so, you know, I know eight, um, eighty, highway sixty-five, so what I would ask you all, if you have roads in your particular districts, if you would email that to me so that we can include that in the list, so we don't leave anything out.
So we keep with the, power of a list of roads that are damaged?
Right, right, we're compiling a list of roads that have been damaged by, what we think is happening is all of these eighteen wheelers coming through, going back and forth to Meta, hold on just one second, okay? So what I'm asking you all to do, put together a list, if you feel like you have a road in your district that is being traversed by an eighteen wheeler going back and forth, put that on there, okay?
So are, are we gonna, are we gonna try and get monies for this, or we just gonna try and get roads fixed?
So, uh, Francis Thompson has said that he is going to go to Meta to get the roads fixed.
Okay, so a, a, as, I'm not against that, but as a city, when, uh, all the things we're gonna do is just try to get the roads fixed and not get compensated for it? Cause that's a lot of money coming back and forth, that if we can get some revenue from the amount of rocks that's being hauled through to move it, that we do a right of way tax, you know, ordinance, plus to generate funds based upon the tons, tons that are being driven on our roads, see, it's not just enough to get the roads fixed if we can generate some revenue.
That's two different things, that's a wonderful idea, okay, it's a wonderful idea. We want, we want to put something like that together, we can, but as a write down, I'd like you all to give your list by the fifteen, and we'll go forward on that, yes, ma'am?
There was an accident unfortunately on five twenty, and all those stupid trucks got off on Johnson Street, and they tore it up, I mean, they, they got off and they went on two eighty, but, um, they had to detour because of the accident, so they wound up taking, um, a series of roads to get up, and they were huge dump trucks, and they wound up down Johnson Street. So if you could include that in your suicide appropriate, because I know that the accident caused, um, right over on the other side, on the west side of the interstate's overpass, but they all got off there and they wound up trucking along over at the Richmond exit, and so we got on Johnson Street, and it was kind of busy.
Mister Hicks, let's talk with, uh, Camika tomorrow, I think that's a wonderful idea that, uh, Councilwoman Wells has, maybe somebody, maybe Richmond Parish is doing something like that as well, so let's look into that, yes, ma'am?
I know, uh, Mayor Washington, you know, I suppose you, you've already got some money for that.
They do, that's why.
Okay.
Like, back, you know, back in June.
Okay, hey, it's a good idea, let's look into it.
Hey, but why isn't the council made aware of all these meetings that we had that are going to?
So the council was not invited to that meeting yesterday, the mayor was invited.
You gotta, you gotta start some work.
What I'm saying, I, I got you, you's a police jury, right?
I've got to do it, yes, sir, I.
How many police jury members was there?
How many we have there?
How many was at that meeting?
How many?
How many police jury members at that meeting?
I mean, it was empty, maybe?
Yes, sir.
One.
Just you?
Me.
Right, so.
The other should've been there.
So you all, you all had opportunity to come?
Yes, we do.
So you all understand, so who had the meeting, who was, who was over the meeting?
Who was over the?
Yeah, who called the meeting to order, who called the meeting?
I don't know that we really called a meeting to order, do you?
But what I'm saying, who, who, I know, was who, uh, had, who was the host of the meeting?
The court.
The court?
Court, yes.
And so they had, they invited all of the police jurors?
Yes.
And only invited the mayor from the city of Tallulah?
Yes.
Not good.
You gotta understand, that a police jury is the top governing body of this parish.
I, I, I.
And we have to be involved in everything.
I, I understand, but, but they also drive across the city to the streets. And, and, and we have to learn to operate that the police jury also works, we supposed to work together. So.
But, I, I thought that's what we was trying to do.
Right, so I'm saying, so sometimes it's good to have other people sitting at the table too, instead of one person.
You gotta start some work.
I, I know what I'm saying.
We started with a small group, if you start with a large group, you'll never get that done, cause somebody is always more hard.
One of the big, one of the other things that came up at the meeting, okay, was that all of the municipal bodies in the parish need to start getting together quarterly to meet, that came up in the meeting, that means for those meetings, everyone will be invited to those meetings, this was simply to talk about the roads, getting a list together, was not trying to leave anyone out, um, but we did talk about everyone getting together, and the council will be, um, invited to that.
This is all I'm saying, and I, I, I don't care about feelings, what I'm simply saying is this, the mayor is not the only voice for Tallulah. Just like all five police jurors were invited to that meeting, all five council members should at least been invited, whether they come or not. And that's when you're trying to be open, but when you don't have one person to come to a meeting, that's not good. Cause real public bodies, then the entire public body should be allowed to tend and meet. So it's not about arguing about something, it's about everybody at the table being represented, because Ms. Lewis is only one person. And her power is limited based upon the council.
You've already had an opportunity to speak.
No, this is about something else.
Okay, but you've already had an opportunity to speak on this side.
And so what, all the thing I'm saying is that I think that when there's things that are going on, even as a mayor, you say, no, council, I've been invited to that meeting, if any of you all are able to make it, would you all come to the meeting with me? And I think that goes to a transparency with the council being involved in the process. That's just my thinking, but, but if I was mayor, I'm not going to no meeting by myself. I'm gonna send an invitation to every last one of my council members and invite them, so, cause one person only hears certain information. But if five of us are there, we all can hear something different, then we can come together as a group for the city leadership and say, guys, what do you all think about this, this, and that, and we have a plan of action as a city government. So the mayor only has one point of view.
Okay, the last thing under the, uh, mayor's report is, um, I had said that we were gonna talk about the boundaries, um, turns out this is, uh, a lot more, um, than could be discussed with my knowledge, okay? Um, what I have done is I reached out to Mr. Messenger just to bring myself up to speed on what needed to be done, okay? Also, Mrs. Hayden, um, brought again to our attention the ordinance that was signed in twenty twenty-one, um, accepting the plan, and then that plan is shows certain things within the city boundaries. The ordinance also says that it was supposed to be sent to the Department of Justice, to the state, uh, and to the registrar voters. I do not, I do not believe that happened, I don't have any records showing that that has happened. So what I'm trying to figure out now is, council voted on it, it's an ordinance, but because it wasn't sent to those other bodies, is it something that we can go with? My understanding, um, my understanding from the, uh, registrar voters is, they cannot do anything until they hear from the state, which would make me think the state can't do anything until they hear from the federal government. So I don't know the answers to those questions, which is why I don't wanna have this discussion tonight. We're gonna have it, you know, in two weeks, we'll have all of the answers, um, and then we can discuss it openly. Mrs. Hayden will have some info, information that she wants to share, I've spoken with Mr. Bagby, promised him to, that he would have an opportunity to speak as well. Um, and the attorney and I are gonna be looking into some things, so we will put all of the information out together, figure out what we need to do, go forward.
Okay, I, I got a comment on that, cause that's totally incorrect, that's totally incorrect. The lady from the Department of Justice said, what has to happen is that the city of Tallulah has to file that information. You don't have to wait to hear from the federal government, they've already gave us their assessment of what the boundaries are. The lady said, but we're supposed to the city, we have a deadline, I told you all that two years ago, uh, go write some emails, Mr. O on the email, Mayor Finison, you was there and all that, said, we have, the only thing we have to simply do is submit the ordinance to the clerk of court's office. The clerk of court is supposed to upload that to the state data, data center, which the state will have it, and then the federal government is gonna pull it from the state. It's not backwards, it don't go from the federal government to state to local, that's not how it works. We have to submit the ordinance to the clerks, and I talked to Ms., uh, Marion at the clerk's office, she said, we benchtop filed the ordinances over there. So the only thing we have to do is, it's simple, it's not hard, is take that ordinance that's been voted on by you all as a council, you all, and take it to the clerk's office and file it, it don't take no three months. The ordinance, like you, you said that commission stuff that ain't there but three years ago, you said that still stands? So ordinance is legal, it's a law. So the only thing I do is take that ordinance, I had it, I sure had it, the first thing she went to order, is take that.
Go ahead, sorry.
Take the ordinance that was passed in twenty twenty-one, give it to Ms. Marion at the clerk's office and file it.
And give a copy to the.
And give a copy to the, uh, the registrar voters' office, and they're gonna upload it to the state site. Then once we upload it to the state site, the federal government will pull it from our state site, and that's how they will have the boundaries, it don't take a lot of time. But the thing that we're doing now, we're kicking the can down the road, because if we don't have that stuff submitted by a certain deadline, those folks still can't vote. So the longer we kick the can down the road, those folks can't vote, so it's simple, in the morning, get that ordinance, make sure you get a copy so they can handle it. I know, but I'll make sure, so we take that ordinance, give it to the mayor, and they go file it. Then once you file it, give a copy to Ms. Brown at the courthouse. She, I mean, at the registrar voters' office, she will upload that data, then the state will pull it, and then the federal government is gonna pull it from the state, cause the lady said, when I asked her about it, she says, I gave you, you filed an email. I think January is the last day we're supposed to have something in in order for it to be legal to vote in the next election. And the last date for the year, I think it's July, that we have to have, am I right, Mr. O?
That sounds right.
Yes, I, I know, that we have to have that stuff in, so we trying to keep kicking the can down the road, so the paperwork gonna be done.
And that, that is totally incorrect, I have no reason to wanna kick this down the road.
But the, the ordinance already on file.
Which is what I said.
So it's taken the clerk's office.
I told you that, okay, and I appreciate your information, I'm going to give the information for myself, okay? So that's what we're going to do, so the attorney and I are gonna work on that, I appreciate what you said, okay? Not saying that you won't, right?
Mr. O, as a custodian of record, he's responsible for filing all ordinances, so, so he, so he can do it tomorrow. He can do it tomorrow.
I've already said what we're going to do. But thank you, but thank you, Mr. Wells, thank you. Okay, those are all the things that I had under the mayor's report, um, we're gonna go to public comments?
Yes, I, I, I have a few things that I, I want, I want to deal with, I'm, I'm sorry, I have a few things I want to deal with. And, and as a council, I think it's very important, and I'm gonna have one type of, for, for the next meeting, is have an ordinance that states that we should be able to add an item to the agenda. I may not get any backing on it, but I think as a council, we should be able to add any item that we want to add to the agenda. Because sometimes individuals don't want to talk about certain things, so after they have the authority to keep it from being on the agenda that never happened. And placing things up under the mayor's report is a way to keep it from being an agenda item to be discussed by people. So the mayor's report is how we hiding a lot of stuff from being discussed in open settings, far as being able to be brought back against us. So now, what I want, what I want, so what I want to do is, I'm gonna bring forth an ordinance that I want to be adopted by the council, so I hope you all backing, that council members can add items to the agenda, the law allows that. If we do a mechanism that we can add items to the agenda without the mayor having to prove it. With there's things that I be wanting to talk about, that Mayor Lewis and Mayor Finison want to talk about it, they just want to add it. And then I try to ask to be added to the agenda at the meeting, we vote no, and it doesn't happen. So I want to make sure that uh, also, I want to bring up the fact that you wrote that, that uh, Mr. Holden, who wrote those minutes for this past week for the last meeting? Who wrote those minutes?
Oh, what?
You didn't? Okay, because uh, the, the, the guy, uh, Mr. Holden said that he didn't see a state law that said that the mayor could not write the minutes for the meeting. And I beg to differ, I don't want y'all to see that, so y'all don't think I should be talking. So according to statute thirty-three, code number four twenty-one, it says the clerk is responsible for recording the proceedings of the mayor and the board, and keep the same fully un-indexed alphabetically, so that all entries on the minutes can be easily found.
Doesn't exclude, ma'am?
It does, it says the only thing the mayor can do, sir, is nominate someone, appoint someone other than the clerk, that's the law, it ain't nobody's opinion. It says, as clerk is not an elected official, mayor with confirmation of board may appoint someone other than the clerk to take the minutes of the board meeting. But it says the clerk is the keeper book, label, in which he shall record the proceedings of the mayor and the board. So no one is supposed to write those minutes except the clerk.
And as mayor, the minutes were not going to be done on time, so I made sure.
We cannot do it. So, so Mr. Holden. So Mr. Holden, you made a statement that it wasn't, you didn't see a state law, be that state law? Because this gonna also be part of my open meetings violation.
Mr. Wells, what else do you have, um, besides that?
So, so the thing that has to happen, we gotta understand, we gotta operate by law and not by emotions and feelings. So according to the law, that's what is supposed to happen.
Okay, you have the ordinance, the minutes, is there anything else, sir? Nope, okay, any other public comments?
And so I want to make Ms. Dave, Mr. Scott, and Ms. Houston be aware that I'm also filing open meetings violations against you all, I want there to be a matter of record.
I was gonna ask, because I really support this, this openness with having someone from the police jury come here, and I have repeatedly asked y'all to be part of the police jury, because we have that twenty billion part of the hundred twenty billion Westchester shared award.
Hold on, Ms. uh, Carter.
We need to be able to have access to that money, because we have water damage too. And that money would help us, because it helps fix the roads, it helps fix the, the cars along the drainage areas and, and even the brushy bayou, all of it would be benefited by that money. And some of it's supposed to be ours, you know, we're supposed to receive this money. And not having it and not being able to access it is not really fair to us.
Can I ask you a question, what is your name?
Sophie McKnight.
Sophia McKnight?
Stephanie.
Stephanie McKnight. Ms. Stephanie, can you come see me tomorrow?
Okay, about what time?
Um, about nine thirty?
Nine thirty, good.
Yeah, yeah, come and see me.
And I, before we, uh, the new element of the council, and you and uh, Lewis to see the letter that I'll be sending to Attorney General in the morning, so I'm, I'm gonna give it to you before I send it. So you all know what I'm saying.
Mr. Carter, who do you come forward with, sir?
So I want you to be aware.
Ms. Dave.
Oh, you get your award, I'm proud of you, buddy, get your award, good job.
So first of all, we want to tell you thank you for what you're doing in the community, okay? We're giving donations, we have the sand chicken and water to everybody. If y'all see his truck, you can see that there's water on the back of it and everything, he's doing what he can um, to help our community, um, in your own way, and we appreciate that. So, um, we have a proclamation for you that we would like to present to you, just to tell you thank you for what you're doing, um, for your wife as well, she's included in this as well. Um, if anyone wants to make a donation to uh, Mr. Carter to help with water that he gives out to the homeless or folks in need, you can certainly see him and uh, give him that money and something.
Can you take a picture of, of uh, Kevin?
I'll take it.
I would have made your birdhouse down the line and to be with.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor Lewis, Mayor, Mayor Lewis, if I have any tissue, be very, so if you don't mind.
Kimmy, I'll send it to you, okay?
You know, uh, before we leave, I, 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 I think we really need to deal with, you know, I, I think we really need to look at how and why we remove individuals from our meetings. You know, be- because individuals are allowed to participate. And, and that gentleman raised his hand and said, Mayor Lewis. And you looked past him to keep him acknowledging.
No, I did not, he started talking, I told him he had not been recognized.
Right.
He kept talking, I said him again, he kept talking and I said.
And he kept saying, Mayor Lewis.
He was, he was not recognized.
Right.
So, like you said, and we're not gonna deal with feelings, we're gonna deal with what happens, the facts.
I, I've seen several times in this meeting, okay? That when insert individuals talk out, we take a harsh stance against them. But one meeting, you have a row of young ladies talking the entire time, being loud, making ki- all kind of comments. You all heard them, nobody said nothing to them. The chief heard them and said, y'all stop that. And they was disrupting the meeting, and you all didn't say a word to them. See, if we can't pick, if we're gonna have decorum, and I don't know if it's what I'm gonna do here, and if we're going to say if someone is talking out of turn in the audience, we got to have the same energy for those ladies that was at the back back there talking and disrupting, like we do with anybody else. We also have the chief that'll sit over there and start hollering in the meeting, and nobody says anything. So if we're gonna have order in the meeting, it just can't be for certain individuals. I, 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 I don't, and, and I, I raise my hand, but as a council person. Right, right, a- as a, and you would allow to, and we as a member.
I'm not, I've never said I can't.
And so now, can we remove, you as the mayor, when you interrupting?
No, you can't.
Yeah, so you can't move a council member either.
Terry, Terry, I just said, you think about removing the council member?
I'm not, I'm not just talking about us, we're not special.
Terry, and then, uh, yeah, yes ma'am.
I have a quick question or kind of comment, uh, with the Magnolia coming. I don't know if the city council or uh, still has any control over the rates or the number of gallons, but with all of the people, or many people having to flush extra gallons of water, would it be out of line to increase the, the lower limit of thousand to fifteen hundred until we validate that the distribution lines are clear, as well as the water that's coming out of the plant? And then when that's done, go back to the thousand gallon rate?
So any change in the water rates is gonna have to be done by ordinance. Typically, there's a rate study done, I mean, there's a little bit more to it than just saying, hey, we're gonna change it for six months and then go back. Not saying that it can't be done, okay? Um, but that's certainly something that we can look into.
Okay, because I thought there was an ordinance passed where you could just incre- y'all voted to increase it?
No, no, no.
Without proposing it to the rest of the city?
No, that was, that, that's when you're raising the rate according to the CPI, and that's along with our bond covenants for our debt. So it's not a separate ordinance just saying, hey, we can raise the rates whenever we want to.
Okay, that was just.
But Terry, call, let's call me tomorrow so I can get all the information so that, you know, we can look into it.
Because I, I hear people that, in particular, go to those water meetings and say, look, I got flushed extra, once they're doing it around here, and it's all being wasted. It's not that they wouldn't pay for it, they just paid a lower rate on some point of portion.
Yes ma'am?
Oh, I have a question about Ms. Hayden, so Ms. Hayden been passing out water since we getting in this crisis, I was trying to see was she gonna be acknowledged to?
Yeah, absolutely, I did that because someone asked me to, but certainly, 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 yeah, thank you, thank you. Ms. Hayden, we know you've been doing stuff for a million years, you know, um, but.
Appreciate it. I do it with my heart, that's my, I know, I appreciate you, I appreciate you bringing it up, alright.
Well, let's give her a round of applause anyway. Thank you, thank you.
And, and this Terry, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned about the water. So when is the city gonna come up with a plan for resuming ownership of our water system? Because I understand that Magnolia is looking forward to being, having extension on maintaining control of the plant, from my understanding.
So I have a skeleton letter that I'm putting together, um, I think we're going to have to look at, are we gonna be able to maintain the plant? We're also gonna have to look at our collections, because we weren't doing either one of them right. So I have a skeleton letter that I'm putting together, obviously, I'm gonna ask for you all's input. I think the sooner the better, we need to get that to the governor, we're six months in to their, their con- we're six months into their contract. If we want to keep our water plant, our water plant, it's time for us to put some sort of plan together to show what we're going to do and show that we can do it. Y'all, we, we've already showed that we can. So the state is gonna want to see something concrete, with numbers, with all different types of things, to show that, that we can.
Okay, now, now, you've been part of, of the administrative tutorial leaders. So my, my concern is, how, how well are you gonna be to put together a plan that you've not already tried to implement or assist in the implementation from where we are now? Then my other question is, when are we gonna ever, because y'all been saying for long, y'all gonna show me a copy of the blueprint that Mr. McManus did for the water plant that we don't have, we don't have our hands on? So have we ever got a copy of the blueprint yet?
I'm, we're around somewhere.
We have plans in place.
So where the plans in place at?
In the office.
Okay, are we gonna have to bring them so we can see, because I've been asking for it for three months now?
You want to stay afterwards and say?
No, no, I, I, I want the people to see it, too, we paid a million dollars for this stuff, and we have nothing. So my thing is, I think we need to come up with a plan that does not include the governor. Because the governor cannot control our water system. And, and we should not be going and asking the governor, what can we do? We should be seeking out options, I understand that the plan is, let's let them stay around a long time. I understand the plan, I knew from the conversation that, it's long term, but you asking me, uh, go meet with them?
Yeah, to show him our plan to keep control of our water plant.
But I, I, I don't think we, we should be, because my understanding is that they're already trying to get us to go along with keeping them around long term. I, I ain't gonna tell you. And so I heard it, I heard it, I just heard it, so.
Yes, I have one thing, is there any way possible that you all can invest into a sound system up here? Because the people cannot understand, they cannot hear what you all are saying. Please try, the same thing at Community Center, I've asked for that for years. Please try to invest in one.
Yeah, I think this, this one up here, I think something has been changed on there, because it didn't always do that.
Yeah, please try to find out.
Just get somebody to come in and check the sound, just get somebody to come in that knows audio and have them check to see what's up.
And they did, they did that when they put the new thing in, and I think something has been moved. Okay, you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.